Yeah.
Don't you get it? It's not. We're still back.
Well, if we can try.
And I wanted to go there.
Okay. Come please. There you go. We sent this. Whatever you did.
And and.
It's been five. You know. You got it. But. You just.
To talk to a little lecture, get that in there.
I'm glad I seen.
Lady walking there. She she fully. Stop at the desk and she says, and now where's where do I push the buttons for them to stop the political?
And it's that's. My. Taking. And we are. Luckily.
So. Yeah. It's your doctor. And he asked like. Yes. I didn't. That all about make it. So. Because. Question. Tell me. Who's they? I think five. What is this? About. Even have another. Literally. A lot of what you can say. So. Yeah. One. I mean. I think. The best. I know. I look at first one. And. We usually. Around you. I think you got a reason. I look at digital. I guess. Yeah, I see it.
No, I think it does. I said. Third down. And. Somebody ask Joe, you can hear. No, Jeff, Jeff, can you hear? Just nod.
Yeah, I can. Can you hear me?
No.
What'd you say, Jeff?
Can you hear me?
Ah, that's. Now we can. Hmm. What do you? It's. I don't. I don't. I want to get a topic. Over. Player. Plus one. Please. I thought it was. I'm asking. But. I want to. Honestly. We're going to. Call. And you. Turn. Yes. In a half a battery. It's. Much better than half a bubble. Yeah, I got. I got a recording of what you want to do next. Something. Talking about. If I. I've got an own. Right. Isn't that? Yeah. Yeah, I want to see it. I want to see that. Oh, I know. I'm looking at it. Yeah. You know. I. They. That's what. I'm. It's. Once. And. Do. You know. I want. I love.
So goes four days. Great. And.
So. When I. Fuck. Everyone's going on. I'm. Saying. Culture. There's a lot of things. There's always. That. Everyone's. Which shows a very long. But. There's. It was very. They want to. I just. Same. Why I've been. Reviewing. These writers are not. Yeah. In. It's. I'm. That's. About. Right. I'll. Tell. Um. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. And. And. I don't. About. Four. Or. To be. John. He doesn't. See. All. My. God. And. This. I'm. Interesting. I'm. Fine. I'm. Yep.
My. So. Very. Neat. They. Best. And I. I have. I still. Find. It's.
Yeah. Okay. Not. Which we have. The. You know. Which. If. Yeah. How it works.
Stay. Here. I'm just saying. Yeah. But. You. So. Mary's there. Announcement folks. Mind your p's and q's. Okay, we have seven thirty. Call me. Morning. Medical regents.
I believe it is. What? United States. She. Which is. Again. Well. I'm. God. Indivisible. You know.
Hold on, please. Mr. Nimmick here. Mr. Hoffman here. Thor here. Mr. Harney here. Mr. Dattley there. Mr. Bradham.
Yeah.
You were. Of course. Mr. President. We've got six of the six trustees present. We have a quorum. We have a meeting. And although the governor did. Extend the gubernatorial proclamation until the fall of this month. Uh, we do not have any trustees attending remotely this evening. We do have the village engineer with us remote though. Uh, however, Jeff, we're not going to do roll calls on the votes if we do not need to. Well, when I can get by, we'll just do the regular. Uh, voice votes as necessary, except for the ordinances, which are always roll call. Uh, so we've gone through the gubernatorial proclamation. Got that. So. Taken care of. Uh, the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of October seventeen, two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve during the forty-eight minutes of ten seventeen.
Second.
Load by. Uh. Harney seconded by Thorn. All those are any comments, questions or changes to the minutes? If not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The minutes are so approved. Thank you all. Uh, before we go on into the president's report, I'd like to take just a minute here this evening. And have a moment of remembrance for our former trustee. Uh, that used to serve with the village of Sleepy Owl. Uh, I don't know if all of you knew it or not, but uh, last Thursday, twenty-seventh, Betty Z. That boy. Betty had been a trustee here at Sleepy Owl. She and her husband Harley raised four daughters. And Rainbow Rain. Uh, yeah. And uh. The one daughter has a husband who is currently sitting on the board. Joe Nemic was Betty's son-in-law. So. Betty was very influential in this village in her day. She was on this board back in the late seventies and early eighties. So she saw a lot of the sewer projects and the water. Project come through within this village, so. Uh, I just. Wanted to thank Linda for her mother's service to this village. Was appreciated and I know Betty enjoyed it. Talked about it a lot. So wanted to let you know that, you know. Our condolences go with you and your sisters.
Thank you.
Gilbert. You had anything to?
I, you know, I was just, that's one of the reasons I'm here. Betty was very proud of me when I. I. Picked up because I kept on hearing stories about the parks and getting involved. So that's one of the motivations here. Tony going through his, it's not, she saved us her. Entire life. It's like just some notes and history and newspaper articles. And I think I sent out something about the water. Wow. So we put that in the the history section. I know Rena saves himself, but there's some newspaper clippings and some other stuff, so.
There's a picture of you with hair.
Oh, yeah. Why? I'd be. Only see her then.
No.
Thank you. Thank.
This is awesome.
Put it right on. So thank you.
All right. Now moving on with the agenda. Uh. This one is a FYI type of situation. Uh. The Gaul property, AKA the. Uh, what was it? Uh.
Great.
Crighton's.
And Tucker's.
Crighton's and Tucker's. Property. Uh. We have gotten a five thousand dollar escrow of. Account established in the Gaul property. And part of that is for the rezoning of that property. Now, if you all recall sometime in the past couple of years, I probably have said something to you all about thinking about that piece of property and what we might be able to do. Well, we are in that process right now. And I have been in conversation with the attorney about the village filing a petition for rezoning. Okay? There's a number of issues over there. As you all know, it is typically, it is zoned our run. And right now it is what we would call non-conforming compliance. Nothing over there. Well, there are three residences in there. We know the buildings are there, but beyond that, the rest of the property is not being in conforming to the zone. So something has to be done over there. And. Attorney and I are currently discussing issues that need to be addressed and what could be done over there. Uh, we thought we might have some idea this evening. Thus the agenda item on it. However, at this point, we still haven't come up with a clear idea how we're going to. Uh, do the rezoning. One of the thoughts is that we could. Make it a B two. We've got a B one. We did a B two for Randy's Market some ten years ago, if you recall. Well, when they've started changing from the uh. Concept that they had of the market. We revised the zoning for them. And it's possible what we could do at this point is pick that zoning up and move it over to the Gaul property. Burlo Mattress and you something similar over there. I say he's got us kind of uh. In a pickle as to what exactly to do with the rezoning. But I just wanted to let you all know. And to be ready for. You know, a rezoning coming down the pike here within probably the next month. That I would like to see, you know. A petition brought to this board for rezoning of that piece of property. Whether it's me, zoning officer, board as a whole, one of the two of us will be bringing that petition forward to this board. And we will be going forward to something on the zoning of that property shortly. That is where we stand on that at the moment. Uh. The next item. Is ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen. This is an ordinance amending our liquor regulations for the sale of packaged liquor. Within the village and this new classification will be a B one classification. We do currently have a class B. But that is for packaged liquor of only beer and wine. This class B one would include all liquors. So. Uh, that is on the agenda for this evening. It uh. Is in your packet and I would appreciate a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen.
So moved.
Second, the.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Diaby to approve ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen. An ordinance amending the liquor regulations for sales of packaged liquors within the village. Including a new license classification, that on class B one. If you take a look at the ordinance, you will notice that uh. We have got the sales hours listed from. Noon. Uh, let's see, we tried to match the ones across.
It's. Close. It's close midnight to six AM. Except on Sunday morning, it'd be nine AM. And that matches up to, for example, the jewel store across the road. So those are hours that West Dundee set for that user. Uh, and um. So at least for discussion purposes, that's what proposed to. Now it's. Sorry. Does that match our current restaurant that's down there too? At the same. Hours, I believe. I'm not sure about. Okay. Restaurant.
It's just going to be the same kind of liquor store that they have there in uh. What is it? Century Plaza right now that just opened up. In the last month or two. The one by Dominix. Well, I mean. Have you seen that?
No. But.
It takes up that whole.
There had a liquor store over there.
Say what?
There had been a liquor store over there. Did they expand it?
They must have expanded it because it's huge right now.
It's new.
It's new? Yeah, I thought it was.
Brand new.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that's why when I saw this, I figured, geez, why are they putting this one in if there's one right around the corner? I mean, it's good for us.
The applicants.
Well.
So. Might uh. Might direct that question to them. Really with us.
Can we? Sure. No, I mean, it's fine. I I. Have no problem with it though, but I just saw one. I wondered if that was yours over there too.
It falls in West Dundee?
Yes.
Right? Right off thirty-one and.
Yes, right there behind that. Doctors of Physical Therapy.
Yeah.
The clears.
Oh, okay. You're talking Century Pla- okay. The old Tandy. Top in. So.
Yeah.
I thought you talked.
No, right, right back at the Ostrich Place.
Yeah. Your roller rink.
Yeah, the old. Never. Was. Yeah. All right. I I was just went to Dominix the other day and I saw it open and I figured, whoa, where the heck this thing come from?
It opened for a few months. It was open in the summer. Cause they had a grand opening.
Maybe because it was dark and it was all lit up.
Yeah. We made it that the hours do not match. Uh. In fact, a a restaurant and a restaurant with outdoor seating each have different hours. And they're all, they're different from what the liquor store.
Okay.
And the reason. Not drastically, but just, you know, a little bit. But.
And the reason we're saying six AM. Opening is because the jewel grocery store opens at six AM? And they sell liquor at six AM? Correct.
Yeah. Wow. The president. Just.
Would would the app, would the? Would the owners open the store that early?
No. I. The. Indication from them has been no, they would not.
Usually all the village have the same, same what they propose to you. The liquor hours, not selling one. We're not going to open that early either.
We were looking at, yeah, the competition.
Right.
Didn't want to have him handcuffed and say, you know, he couldn't open till noon. You know, the guy across the street was going to open at nine o'clock in the morning. But. So that's.
Our maximum hours will be eight to midnight. And we can't. This is. Any days will be either earlier.
No. Yeah.
Said any other questions or comments? I'm sorry.
We need to establish an annual fee for. Like. I was my extra president.
Uh, packaged goods for at the moment, a beer and wine is eleven hundred dollars. Restaurants are sixteen hundred. Private clubs and banquet halls are six hundred dollars. Uh, recommendation for a fee.
That would just go with what we have for the, you know, to keep it consistent.
Eleven hundred dollars for the packaged goods?
Yeah, that pretty consistent among other villages too for this kind of.
It's all over the board with them. I mean, some that you would expect to be high were low and others you expect to be low were high. Yeah, so.
And that's right now, that's saying that B two is. Packaged goods for beer and wine at eleven hundred.
Correct.
And restaurants at sixteen hundred. So my assumption is restaurants sell. Restaurants also sell hard liquor. Uh, what restaurants also sell. You know, um, rum and and things like that, right?
Right.
So. The packaged goods, just beer and wine. At least right now with this. Proposal is not including liquor, correct?
That's what we are adding to.
Right.
And instead of adding another fee. Mr. Nemic is suggesting we just stay at eleven hundred. For all packaged goods, whether it's beer and wine only or whether it's all liquors.
If I don't make that motion necessarily for discussion.
It's all part of the ordinance and the p's that we need.
We need somebody that in the.
Time as well. We need the time and the amount. So.
Times in the ordinance, right? So. So. I'm. Right. That we. Got the ordinance.
Okay. If you want to do an amendment to the uh, p's, let's do it as an amendment to the main motion. Right?
So we have motion now?
We've got a.
I moved that we set the license for. Would that be for B two or for?
This is B one.
B one.
At eleven hundred?
Eleven hundred dollars.
So.
Moved by Nemic, seconded by Thorn. You amend the ordinance to include B one packaged goods, license fee at eleven hundred dollars. Okay?
So now we have conversation on that.
Now you have a conversation on that.
I think it should be fifteen hundred dollars because restaurant. Uh, beer and wine is one thing. If they're, if they're going to sell liquor. Then that, in my opinion, raises another notch. Cause restaurants sell beer, wine and liquor. So the fact that it's an individual store, I'd rather see it. I mean, fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars. Not, not eleven hundred.
Well, it's different than a restaurant. I mean, they're not serving anything there. And nobody's consuming the the alcohol on the premises.
I I completely understand that and I understand that. You know, they're not going to be drinking at this facility. You're just going to be purchasing.
Yeah.
And that's, I completely understand. I just think that. Um. Eleven hundred dollars is too low. It's just going to be. If it's going to be all three components.
Is there a standard for other? Stores? You said up and down. Okay. License fees tend to be different time to time.
Yeah.
One thing we do have is.
What about the piece for the next door on the same? Uh, Mexican restaurant they have?
Is there a restaurant there sixteen hundred?
Sixty. It's optimized, optimized, right? So how about we get that? In the future, we might need it. Because, you know, the way the liquor industry is going. Lots of people have a tendency to open a bar and uh. Testing is goes a lot. If you have seen it in just a leg, I have seen that. Because, you know, the high-end bottles, people don't want to buy the whole thing.
Right.
Like seventy, eighty dollar bottle. So we give it on a bar for testing and they say, okay, we'll take. Like all the microbreweries, you like to get that one.
That's what they do if that, I don't mean.
Well, that's a different. It's a whole different thing then. Uh. You have a. That's a tavern or a bar, not a liquor store.
That's what they did at the other one. They're so young.
So they can apply for that license in future then?
Pardon?
They can apply for that license.
Yeah, I think we did.
Because we don't want ones like that on the beach.
We don't have it.
They do tastings at that new one.
We have a restaurant.
Right.
But we don't have, we don't have a tavern bar.
No, we don't. So. So there'd be a. We got the. Many new orders for that. To create that type of license, if that's what you would like to do.
And we like to. They could do this.
Right. We like to do that.
Yeah.
So. So we would like us to hold on ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen?
Yeah, we like to get the one I explained to you. If you're paying sixteen hundred dollars, so we rather get pouring license, right?
Pouring license too. It's not what we got drafted at this moment. We can advise that.
Will that be a challenge to do that?
No, 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 it won't be ready tonight, but. Would that be part of this ordinance or is that like a whole separate license? And do we need both? It'd be a different license, different classes. So we just pass this one down and then pass the other one next week just to get it.
Well, there's no need to. Other than, you know, ground work to start the second one.
I'm not sure when they want to start working out.
Well, they've got uh two and a half to three months.
Yeah.
But uh, at least this way, you know, we get the whole thing done the right way the first time.
Yes.
And do it that way. So, okay.
Are you gonna serve food? Or you just want a, a, a bar or?
Mostly it's bar food. I doubt we can even.
I don't know what your business plan.
No, this room is not that super big.
Okay.
We're not gonna create a restaurant. We, we will create a bar. Okay, if you haven't seen a garpil in Crystal Lake, then, then we know exactly what I'm explaining to you.
Is that yours?
No, not a garpil, not a.
Okay, uh, then let's table or not table this, but postpone this. Until the fourteenth or not. And we will add to this. What you call it?
What terminology?
Well, I shouldn't have stopped. Okay. Uh. Anything else then? Any other questions for the gentleman while they're here?
When the person comes in and does the tasting, do they then physically take that bottle out that you opened for them to taste?
Sometimes they buy, sometimes they just buy or test it and they don't like it, they don't like it.
Right, but if they, if they buy it?
Oh, no, 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 no. We need to keep it for our, our testing.
Okay, but so the person not walking out with no?
No, they will buy that, the separate new fresh bottle.
Thank you.
All right. One step forward. Uh, we'll, we'll get you there. So, okay, gentlemen. Uh, thank you for showing up this evening and being sure we can get this done. Correctly the first time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item I've got is another FYI, folks. This is the Open Meetings Act. Sometimes you refer to as the OMA. The OMA is what we all have to abide by. And the Open Meetings Act says that officials conducting village business. Cannot meet in groups that exceed the quorum of a quorum. What that means is there's seven of us on this board. Quorum of this board is four. Three of us is considered the quorum of a quorum. Okay? Two would be half, the third person makes it a quorum. Those three people cannot. Be seen together because of the possibility of discussing village business. Okay? Which is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So anytime the three of us are together, it better be in an open area where there's conversation other than village business. This also goes to anybody on the planning and zoning as well as with the finance. Planning and zoning, we don't have much of an issue because there are seven people and there's three would make a form of a forum. The issue comes in the finance committee. In which we've only got five. A quorum of that is three, so a quorum of a forum is two. So any two people that make up the finance committee. Have got to be very careful in their conversations in public with any other members of the finance committee. Or it can be construed as a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Can I add just one thing, Mr. President?
Sure.
That extends to social media.
That's where I was headed.
But if we're sending back and forth social media messages. About public business, that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
And.
Today's world, that's, that's more, probably more likely than a face-to-face meeting.
Uh, it might be, but I mean, uh, when you get the small groups of only. Five people, two of them attending a meeting together can raise eyebrows in conversations. So that's why I'm bringing it up. Now, that's likewise what Mister Schuster said, social media or electronic transmissions of messages. Is where it gets a lot of us in trouble. We have a tendency to hit reply all. Guess what, folks? You have just now conducted village business with two other members. Of the party. You have violated the OMA. If someone were to turn this into the PAC, which is the Public Access Counselor. You will hear from the Attorney General's Office. I will hear from the Attorney General's Office. Because at the bottom of the day, I'm held responsible for whatever violation takes place, so. Let that just be a warning to each and every one of us. That we do not hit reply all. Messages, if you will notice, typically come from the clerk. Or Mister Van, the Director of Finance. To the group. We do not encourage any trustee to send out messages to all. And expect to be response, okay? Mark, Mister Schuster said, social media expression. You're out on Facebook, half of this board is on Facebook. You start throwing out comments and questions about village business. And Mister Perano responds back to me, and Mister Harney sees that response, and Mister Nemic disagrees with it. We got a very big difference coming on. Pure and simple, so we've gotta be extremely careful about it. Uh. The clerk has gone through. He's got a list of everybody within the village that needs to take this. Open Meetings Act certification. It's an online exam. Those in finance committee and the PNZ will also have to take this and file with the clerk. Your copy of certificate completion. So we know that everybody is on the same page and comes to the OMA. Any questions on that?
Just to follow that, I will be sitting uh, unnoticed. Through those that are uh, uh, appointed, also known as designated individuals. And then it's, 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 it's not a difficult test. It's an open book test. It takes, you know. Half an hour, forty-five minutes. It's depending about how fast you read. So. And I, and you know. You're on your own. You gotta, there's an honor system there, but you do have to complete the training and then turn the, the certificate into me.
Okay, and that is to be done within ninety days of your appointments. So. There's a couple of them you need to hurry. I believe everybody on the board has had that completed. Mister Mills will be double checking that. Okay, that's it for the President's report. Move for the books report.
Uh, what I have for tonight is uh, uh, actually, I request uh. Uh, courtesy of uh, for uh, Mister Van that. For all of you that have had an opportunity to look at the uh, new village website, we ask that you uh, uh. Give it a critical eye. Any changes, suggestions, corrections? Those types of things, please get ahold of uh, Gene or myself. Uh, with, with your proposed changes, specifically those areas that uh, you are liaison for. Uh, please, uh, again, take a critical eye and then any changes or updates, corrections, whatnot. Please get ahold of Gene or, or myself. Uh, that's all, Mr. President.
Okay, on that line though, before we depart the website, I've got a change that I'd like to propose. If you go to the website and you look at it, it says Sleepy Hollow in the heart of the beautiful Fox Valley. I'd like to change that from the heart of the beautiful Fox Valley to the historical Oxbow of the Cox River. Since we actually sit in the Oxbow on the old river. It's much more descriptive of our location and our environment than just the river valley. Just a thought.
I like that.
You know, how many other people have been in the Oxbow? They can be in the valley all they want, but. Just a thought. I don't know, I don't know how, how we go about changing. It's on the uh, very. Is it the legend that we have that? I've seen it up there somewhere. Maybe it is the legend.
Do we have an official slogan? We make an official slogan of the village or is it?
I don't know the process on that one. They said.
I don't think. West Dundee history is the top left button.
Of our site?
Sleepy Hollow homepage.
Thank you for proving my point that we need to have a critical eye.
Well, here's, who's in the heart of the beautiful?
The heart of the beautiful Fox Valley. Yeah. I don't wear exactly where it falls, but we use it a couple of places. About being in the heart of the valley. I was just saying, we're in the Oxbow. We should change it to the Oxbow. I should probably put that as an agenda item. So we can change it next time. Okay. All right, nothing else from the clerk? Thank you, Tony. We'll move to planning and zoning. Nothing from PNZ this evening.
Yes, that's great. I, a zoning commission has been looking diligently at coming up with specifications for um. The business uses, commercial uses within the area. Um, taking into consideration the different plans that are being brought forward. Um, needed signage, et cetera. So, um, it's a work in progress. So. Takes a while to get some of that lengthy document and make all the changes, but they're making. Tremendous progress on it. And if I may, just say to President Pickett and to Miss Mills, does that need to be on their agenda for next week? For the uh, Open Meetings Act session?
Uh, we should probably inform them and uh, check.
I'll put it on the agenda for the watching.
Appreciate it.
So, that's about it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Detmer. Attorney's report.
No report, President. Some discussion later on.
Engineer's report, Mister Steele.
Good evening. A couple items is, first off, you'll see. Uh, resolution for maintenance for section nineteen dash zero, 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 zero. Dash oh, one dash GM. Um, this is for the two thousand nineteen street program. Uh, back in two thousand nineteen is the board passed a resolution for MFT funds in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, with the intent of using the remaining amount through uh, village funds to fund the rest of the road program. However, uh, at that time is the uh. Funds for uh, the street program was actually used all through MFT funds. So uh, the funds were available at the time. So basically, this is just bringing the uh. Uh, books up to snuff and uh, the board needs to approve the resolution in the amount of thirty-seven thousand. Eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay, Jeff, do we need dates in there?
Um, oh, yep, sorry. Uh, that would be one nineteen, or sorry, one, one nineteen. And then twelve thirty-one nineteen.
All right, we have a motion to so approve resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code.
Go move, Harding. Second.
Moved by Harvey, seconded by Diatali to approve the resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Uh, strictly section number nineteen dash zero, 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 zero dash three, one dash the uh, GM. Total amount is thirty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Any comments, questions or discussion? There are being none. Long call, please, as this involves money. Mr. Perano.
Aye.
Mister Natalie.
Aye.
Mister Harding.
All right.
Mister Thornton.
Aye.
Mister Hoffman.
Aye.
Mister Nemic.
Aye.
All right, votes, my negative votes motion, so carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next one.
Say, secondly is to pass a resolution for improvement. Uh, for section nineteen dash zero, 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 nine dash zero, zero GS. Um, this is for the Sleepy Hollow Road Program that was completed last year. Um, initially, the board had passed this resolution under a different form for I dot. However, I dot realized that uh, since this is a federal program, is that. It requires BLR zero, nine, one, one, zero, rather than BLR fourteen, two, two, zero. Uh, so basically is, it's just a new resolution for the same amount that you approved back in. Uh, two thousand nineteen.
Okay. We have, uh, Jeff, I've got one notice on your form. I see it's. Nineteen dash zero, 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 nine dash zero, zero dash RS.
Yeah. That's supposed to be RS, yeah.
Okay, all right, so our agenda is GS, it should be RS.
Yeah, I was looking at the agenda when I said that, sorry. It's supposed to be RS.
Okay. And this one is in the amount of. A hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and no cents. We have a motion to so approve. Resolution for high, for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code. Section nineteen dash zero, 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 nine dash zero, zero dash RS.
So move Diatali.
Second.
Moved by Diatali, seconded by Thorn. Any comments, questions or discussion? Being none, long call, please. Mister Nemic.
Aye.
Mister Perano.
Aye.
Mister Hoffman.
Aye.
Mister Natalie.
Aye.
Mister Hardy.
Aye.
Mister Thornton.
Aye.
Six, forty votes, no negative votes in motions, all passes. Thank you, one and all.
Nice, got the question.
Yes, Jeff, uh, where are we on the uh, road repair right now? Cause I still get questions about that one over there at Acorn and uh. I don't know, going into the block, whatever it is. What is it?
Katrina.
Katrina, yeah, Acorn and Katrina.
Yeah, that's.
Some of the neighbors have been telling me that it's getting pretty bad with some of the uh, the holes in it.
Yeah, uh, so basically is they're gonna be finishing up Joy Lane tomorrow. Um, they got maybe about half a day to three quarters of a day and then they're going to then switch over to patching. Um, if it's getting really bad is, uh, Kyle, I believe you could throw in some, uh. A uh, some aggregate in order to smooth that out a little bit.
Doesn't look like they'll get to everything before it gets too cold because.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Mister Steele?
Nope, that basically was going to be my next thing, is give you a status update on that, so.
How's it go? Ask otherwise.
It's good. Everything's looking good out there.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Jeff.
Yep.
Are you aware the uh, construction team left all the bulldozers on Stevens Court?
Uh, today?
Yeah, I almost hit him making my turn.
Yeah, so this is, they need a place to park it overnight, so rather than actually parking it on Joy Lane. Is that's the safest place for traffic rather than actually all of a sudden everybody encountering a huge paver, but it'll be actually removed tomorrow.
Does the uh, police department know they're sitting there?
Um, they do now.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, moving on to Director of Finance, Mr. Van.
Request a motion for the warrants, the amount of one hundred fifty one thousand, two hundred eighty five dollars and two cents.
Oh, proof. The warrants. Second.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Nimitz to approve the warrants in the amount of one hundred fifty one dollars, two hundred eight, one hundred fifty one thousand, two hundred eighty five dollars and two cents. Comments, questions, additions, or deletions? Be none. Hold call, please. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, emotions, all passes.
Um, I'd like to request a adjustment to the budget based on a five-year capital improvement. So we had. Approved um, a couple items on the five-year cap. One of them being the in-car video, the other one being outdoor drinking fountain. Um, in-car video for ten thousand and drinking fountain for eight thousand. However, um, somehow they did not get transferred over when we actually did the budget. And and to their worksheet. So um, when we had sent out the packet. This was in that packet. But the numbers didn't make it onto the other sheet and didn't get put into the program. So we needed to do a uh. Amendment to the budget. Um, so that they can put in the in-car cameras. Sam, did you want to speak on the in-car cameras, the cost?
Yeah, the in-car cameras, we did get the grant, so that should cover most of the cost. But the reason I went to to Gene with this was because. We know that the material, that the equipment for the new squads is gonna be more expensive than what it was when we budgeted for it last May. It's. It 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 seems like it goes up every month. So that having that money in there will give us a buffer to cover whatever additional equipment costs we have for the new squad car. When a report decides to build it, so. That was the reason I went to Gene with this.
So then I believe I would need a motion to, you know, make that adjustment to put that money back in there.
So move Deatley.
Second. Moved by Deatley, seconded by Hoffman to adjust the five-year camp budget. To reinsert the ten thousand dollars for the in-car videos. This doesn't affect our appropriations.
No.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? No other comments, questions? All call, please. Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes, emotions, so carries.
Um, this is more of just a heads up. Um, I did the tentative property tax levy for um, twenty twenty two. We can um. We're a peak town county, which means that. We are limited to how much we can increase our taxes by um, the rate of inflation or. Five percent, whichever is lower. So in several, past several years, the inflation rate was, you know, one to two percent. And so we could only raise our our tax levy by that amount. Well, this year, the. Uh, rate of inflation is over seven percent. But we can only raise it five percent. And so that's what I had done is I had um. Raised basically all the categories. Um. How does this affect the typical homeowner? Um. Based on the, the value of a typical home being three hundred and sixty three thousand in the village, it would increase their taxes by forty four bucks. So um, we're not gonna vote on this tonight. We're gonna do, we'll vote on it the first meeting in December. And I have to have it done before December twenty eighth, I believe it is, but uh, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up and. Um, the amount for the total levy will be. Eight hundred ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars. What we, or actually, make that eight hundred ninety nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Any questions on that? Um, just wanna give you the heads up on the RFP for the refuse collection. Um, I pretty much use the same format that we, that was used in. It is around two thousand twelve. And I sent that out. I did update it to include um, Halloween and the hollow to get um. Some garbage cans and um. Porcupies. Porcupies for, you know, Halloween in the hollow as well as for the Fourth of July. Um, I personally sent it out and or contacted all the um. Area refuse collection. And I also had it published. Um, I've gotten several inquiries. Um, LRS is very interested in it. And they're out of Rosemont. Um. And Waste Management had some questions, but I have not heard back from group or I have not seen any actual responses. They had until number, I think it's eleven at three thirty. He had to get them back to us.
Hello, we had group. Two thousand twelve, probably.
Something like, it was like right after the, the contract had been signed with Allied. Allied was bought out by Republic. Republic doesn't service this area, so we sold the contract to group two.
And then we extended, we extended the contact.
It was, it was originally, it was originally with Allied and then it was extended to Allied. Yeah, Allied did the RFP and then after the, the time of the contract, it got extended.
Do we have WMI one time too?
Waste Management?
Yeah.
Years ago.
Yeah, I remember them and I remember the one before, but with group though, I mean, it'd be, it's gonna be interesting to see if they come back, but uh. You could probably check for village people, I mean, residents, but I mean. I've seen no challenges with them. I mean, I don't know if we've had any or not though, but uh. I mean, they seem to do an exceptional job, no matter where you go, so.
So just that.
So group's been a good one. It's just that we've been a number of years without going out for an RFP.
Work going out for an RFP.
In the original RFP, I don't think we had. The toters included and the recycling included. That was an add-on later on when the extensions, did you put that into the?
Right, so it. How it was set up is that whether the residents provided their own garbage receptacles or if they provided. The receptacles to give us a price for both. And so that's how this RFP went out. And um, I had an inquiry about that, whether they wanted to be. Willing to accept whatever our residents have within limits. Or would they mandate, you know, their particular cart? And I told them that they could give us a price on just the mandated cart, that they did not have to give the price on both.
Cause that was, I think, one of our savings of this one, I believe, people went with that one. They.
Yeah.
They said, cause it used to be whatever, and they were going to automated machines. So they said, we will buy. The garbage cans for free as part of the contract, and I think they didn't increase the price. They just included that for the extension.
Right, because it makes their job a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
Yeah, yeah.
reduces a lot of their uh, health issues.
Right, or reduced the piece to a lot of residents who are renting them too and that, so it was really unofficial.
How long's the uh? What do you call them? Grass and uh, truck pickup go this year till December?
Not the end of November.
End of November, the first.
Last, last pickup in November. It's the first of April through November each year.
And that's group that does that too.
This contract will take uh, will start January first, twenty twenty three.
I know some people have said uh. That they've had a. Group before and they wanted a smaller container, like they wanted to downsize because they didn't have that with their seniors. And they said that they couldn't get it, or that it was the.
We got one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no problem at all.
I had two across the street from us that were talking to me about, so they couldn't get it.
In fact, we had a big one and they swapped it.
That's actually in the contract. I think it's. Maybe.
Thirty and fifty five gallons or something.
Yeah, thirty five.
But I swapped my own.
Yeah.
Maybe they didn't call group.
Don't call them, the email. Can't get through, try calling.
I think one of the big challenges for LRS um, was the, the billing of the, of the customers. There's a lot of communities where the community handles the billing. And then, you know, pays the, the refuse company. And so that was one of their challenges. But they were uh, very interested in, in the contract. Um, health insurance, so I apologize, the uh. Uh, paperwork did not get into the packet. But we would get a decision by December first or. Or before December first. So if uh, if you want, we can either make a decision tonight or we can uh, wait until next week. We can say you had a chance to look at the uh. The forms. So basically what happens, and this is for our health insurance. Um, part of the problem is that the village was notified by the police union that they will no longer be offering um, medical. Coverage as of uh, uh, January first. And so at that point, the uh, anybody who's on that coverage has to come onto ours. Um. The. Currently, our monthly premium is six thousand four hundred and thirty three dollars and twenty eight cents for the amount of people that we have on it now. That amount, if we kept. Pretty much everything the same is gonna go up to um, sixty eight, sixty nine hundred, which is a seven percent increase, which is basically the cost of. Cost of living. Um, there's some of the um, deductibles and stuff like that in some of the co-pays have increased slightly. Um. They have a couple. Less expensive alternatives using Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, one of them is a. Basically five percent reduction of what we're paying now and a ten percent reduction. However, the cost of the deductibles and the co-pays grow up, grow up significantly. Um. And then they also gave us a choice of United Healthcare, which is a twenty one. Basically twenty one and a half percent increase over what we're paying right now. So basically to, to stay the same as a seven percent increase. Um, if we go with somebody else. Sign significantly higher. The uh, the plans that offer the reduced costs. Um. Are not exactly employee favorable. Basically to uh. Comparison, where an individual deductible would go from two thousand to. What is it? Uh, fifty three hundred. You know. Um, your. HMO would go from zero dollars to twenty seven fifty for an individual, you know, deductible. So it, it just.
I have no issue staying with the current plan and the inflation. And I mean, that's one of the things. That we don't offer the best pay, but that's one of the things we do offer is decent healthcare. So I, I have no problem with that.
Would you want to make that a motion?
I, that is my motion. Put all that in there, too, if you can put all that in there. Uh, what do you motion to keep? Which plan is it?
With Blue Cross Blue Shield at the renewal rate.
Uh, that's my motion, Tony.
Second.
Moved by Dynamic, seconded by Thorn to accept the um. Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal rate for the village's health insurance. Renewal rate will go from a current sixty four, six thousand four hundred thirty three dollars and twenty eight cents to six thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars and three cents. So the comments, questions, or discussion?
Hey, give me one minute. I'm just looking at these numbers too.
Eugene, you mentioned, well, George, you look at that, you mentioned. There was another one that uh.
That's on the first.
Small.
Okay, so the first, on the first, so if you look at the chart. And. The left-hand side is the current policy.
Right.
On the right-hand side are the alternatives. So on the first page, that's United Healthcare.
Right.
That is a different carrier than we have now, and that's the twenty one and a half percent increase.
Right, compared to what's in column one.
Correct. Right. And the third page is basically the same for the same. There's some, again, minor changes. But they kept the renewal at um, this a seven percent increase instead of, you know, significantly reducing it like.
So the third page of our handout is.
What we're voting.
What we're voting on, and that would show that there would still be a slight increase.
Light increase.
And out of pocket.
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree with Joe. I'd like to keep it the way it is. I think we keep the, you know. Out-of-pocket expense to our employees low, that's, that's a big key, and I think that would be, that's good to make it go. Seven percent is not a small raise, but it's uh, it's not huge either when you look at the deductions of everything else.
It's about four hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I think. That'd be an increase.
I agree. It is. We're getting a five percent increase with the levy though, so doesn't really offset. It's five versus seven, but. It is what it is. You gotta look at all the numbers.
And I think that would be, that's good to make it go. Seven percent is not a small raise, but it's uh, it's not huge either when you look at the deductions of everything else. It's about four hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I think. That'd be an increase.
I agree. It is. We're getting a five percent increase with the levy though, so doesn't really offset. It's five versus seven, but. It is what it is. You gotta look at all the numbers.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? If not, roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes, emotions, so passes. Health insurance policies.
Yep.
Thank you for your listening.
Well, it's not, it's the insurance company all together.
So to those that are in the union. Do they get a reduction in their union fees?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be the question for the union.
Well, when they come to the table, think about that. I mean, you gotta give a little, take a little, and you know, if they come to the table and say, we're not gonna take them, say, to hell with this.
Um, I wanna talk about a couple items on the website. So one of the uh, features that the website has is an email subscription, so that when I. Do something of the latest news or um. Pretty much just about anything else, um, it could get automatically sent out to your um, your emails. However, the, if you had signed up under the old website, I do not have those addresses.
I just got on.
Okay.
Apparently the DNS inside the village wifi is not correct, so I'm on the old site.
Okay.
Like the site before.
So. Um. It was, it would work out that um, you know, if, if people wanted to just sign up for with the new one, I'll add, what we have in the old one. It'll probably have to get acknowledged anyway. Um, right now, I think there's a whole. Six people, besides myself, who's on the email list and are, are getting the uh, the updates. Um, you know, some of the things that I had put out there. Is that uh, you know, Metro gave us their budget, so we put that out there. Um. There was a water main break. We put that out there, basis budget. So it's um, the fact that there were some street repairs. So whenever anything. Is happening out there, I'm trying to get it up on there uh, in the news item. So um, you know, and if Kyle, if you, you know, get a water main break or whatever, send that information to me and I'll get it out there.
What jobs?
Um, the other last item is that um, we talked about putting like a short bio and stuff like that for the trustees. Um, I can get that information off the newsletter. However, I think a picture would be nice. So if you can. Either provide me with a picture or I might take a picture of you. Either provide me with a picture, or I might take a picture of you. So uh.
That sounded ominous.
You know, maybe when you're not looking, so uh.
Chief has a couple of mine.
Yeah, we can always just go over to the police department and do mug shots. So uh, you know, I'm trying to give you the opportunity to. Get a uh, a headshot of something that you would like. So. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Eugene. Uh, comments from the public. Ms. Thomas.
Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you to Kyle and Jeff, they've been in touch with me regarding my slail and keeping me. In the loop, and I really appreciate that, so it always helps to. Just keep in touch, and Kyle, thanks for getting your team out there when I called about that big branch that came down during the storm, they were. Out there real quick and able to get it over to the burn pile for the thirty-first. The other um thing I want to ask about or. That I'm not real happy about is the military discount that you're talking about removing from. The uh village stickers, I think that's an injustice to, an insult to our military. Um, even though nobody has used it. It's not to say that somebody might not use it. There are towns that. Not only have for military discounts, they also have for first responders. And um, you know, I'm not saying that we need to add that, but I think that. The discussion last week was, I think everybody was here, I know that it was. Uh, President Pickett, you know, was trying to. Wrap his hands around, it was a procedural. Discussion that was going on and that that had happened, so I appreciate where he was coming from and where. Anthony was coming from on it, but I really think, you know, to go back and forth and have the attorney have to. Take it out, put it back in, take it out, just leave it in, it's not hurting anybody. It's not bothering anybody, and if somebody uses it, I come from a military background, family, I come from a first responder family. And I just think it's an insult to all of them. That you guys are all trying to, you know, you want to take this out, it's not hurting anybody. And it's what, ten dollars, I think, or whatever the discount you had talked about. So I I just, you know, it's my two cents on it, and I just would appreciate that you're all thinking about just keeping it in and. Just leave it in, it it really is not hurting anybody.
Dylan. Uh, Jeff.
Yeah. I too want to thank Kyle and Dylan for picking up the debris that was sitting around in my neighborhood. I don't know if they were, what they were doing in the rest of the town, but thanks for picking up, you know, my neighborhood and the. And the cul-de-sacs and everything. Uh, the other thing too, a neighbor of mine mentioned that it was the day after, the morning after the uh. The Halloween Fest, that there were three women uh. In the park picking up all the debris and garbage and everything, I don't know who they were, but. Just wanted to thank them too. And. The other thing too, last year I mentioned uh, some of the cul-de-sacs were torn up a little bit. And I suggested that we put some snow. Stakes up, so I'm just bringing that everybody's attention once again, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, back to the agenda, lefty report, roads and parks, Mr. Harding.
Uh, on page thirty-seven of the trustee packet. There's a purchase order from Public Works that needs board approval. For five hundred and sixty tons of road salt. Uh, this will supplement the one hundred and eighty tons left over from last year, it could be enough to get us through the winter. Um, the bad news is, is the cost. Uh, the cost last year was sixty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents a ton. This year it's eighty-four dollars and fifty cents a ton. So that figure comes up to forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. So I'll make a motion to approve public work purchase order, the road salt for forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two.
Second. Move from my heart, accepted by Nemic to approve the purchase order, um, sixteen thirty-three eight. In the amount of forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents for five hundred and sixty tons of road salt. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
What did we have in the budget?
Fifty-four thousand.
Was our hundred and eighty last year left over? A good year that we had left over, was that in the past? We normally, we have some left over right now.
Yeah, we usually, I mean, last year there wasn't much snow, but we did have some ice storms, and that actually uses more salt than a regular snowstorm, um. We consistently have about the same amount left over each year. Barring any major blizzard in February or March.
And then when you guys go out, when that event happens, uh, do you normally do like? Sleepy Hollow Road first, or Joey's first?
Uh, we do the hills first, so we'll do uh, like, I'll take care of the west side, so I'll hit Old Brown and Crane. Um, and then I'll hit Sleepy Hollow on my way back down, because then I load up before I get past Hilltop and all that. And then Dylan will head. Uh, Brom, which is in Blox, Locust. Uh, Jockley and Winmore.
You guys do a good job, it's nice to see the red lights flashing through the front window.
I might add, if I did mention it, this is the minimum contractual amount that the village has to buy.
Yeah, so this is the eighty percent of seven hundred tons. Um, through the state bid, you have the option, uh. We always go with the minimum, uh, just in case we have that, if we need an emergency situation, we can go. Twenty percent over seven hundred tons. Um, and I don't know if we've ever done that. I hope not.
I think we have, actually. I think we do, yeah, it's been, been a year, a while. Any other questions concerning the road salt purchases? If not, roll call please. Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Dally.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Nemic.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so carries.
That's all.
That's it, okay, thanks Ed, uh, finance, Mr. Hoffman.
Not a lot, but Eugene, I see we're ordering through Amazon now, so some of the things I talked about before, coming in a lot less expensive.
Well, that's, we did order from Warehouse Direct because they were absolutely cheaper than Amazon, so we we do shop for the best price.
But they deliver too?
They deliver too.
Uh, just a couple of questions too, on uh, these probably are Kyle's though too, but. The Ohio Electric, I saw that, I wasn't familiar with that, and uh. Pump source, I guess that's for some of the uh, is that for the water mains and the high grade that broke?
Pump supply, I mean.
Yeah.
Pump supply is the sewer pumps. Um.
Oh yeah, you had a grinder or something?
That's a grinder pump. It's all, it's all a part, it's a two horsepower pump that goes into the sewer and getting all the houses that are connected to the sewer here.
Okay.
Ohio Electric is the electrical panel box to power the sewer pumps.
Okay.
So each house has one of those as well.
And then the other was, what's an Ultra Strobe? Uh, did you see that on there, Ultra Strobe Communication or?
That's our spark fire, that's our outputter.
Oh, is that what that is? Yeah. So it was after the new car, one of the old.
Which, which amount was that, the one one hundred?
Yeah, twenty.
It was something we had talked about, uh, we currently have wooden boxes in the back of the.
Yeah, I remember now.
These are for the new trunk.
That was the trunk, yeah, you had said that, and you talked about how somebody could get hurt with this, yeah, okay. All right, and the other is, uh, you know, I'm gonna be uh relocating shortly, but um. I've got a bunch of stuff, if you need it, I said before, you can have some of it though, but I've taken a lot of the stuff that I don't use anymore. Uh, heavy-duty wrenches and stuff like that, from one inch to. One and seven eighths, two inch, you need any?
I think so.
Can you use them?
Sure.
Watch what you ask for, I'll bring it over tomorrow.
I may have to bring the truck over.
And then some, see, it was some tier hoes, some quarter inch and half inch, used, I mean, brand new, it's still in boxes.
If you don't want it, I'll take it.
All right. I saw the car in the garage the other day, and I was wondering what they were doing, and it's moving stuff, you know, that like. Numerous, you know, chests and boxes in the garage, and I'm trying to get them down to one big one. So uh, whatever's left over, I'll bring over. But uh, are you here in the morning?
Yeah.
Like, most of the time, or?
Yeah, Monday through Friday.
All right. I'll catch you tomorrow, or. That's it.
Okay, thank you, George, water and sewer.
No, just a few things, let me know what's going on, we need. Let's go with broken water coming first, but over the summer, we had a drunk driver hit a fire hydrant on Hillcrest, Eugene is working with the insurance to.
Already got the mine.
Perfect, okay, yeah. Uh, we had the township, whether Moe take out a fire hydrant on Monkowski, you're working on that one too, or?
Oh.
Kyle said they've not called them back, they've kind of blown them off, so.
Sorry, we'll get, we'll get all of them.
Okay, uh, we also know that issue that comes up every few years when the fire department personnel turn over. Um, wait, Steve has gone over there several times now and had like conversations, could. Um, they are supposed to notify Kyle and get some training on opening, closing the fire hydrants, notify us when they're gonna do it, so we keep track of the water. They did not do that, ended up breaking a fire hydrant on Stevens, which was probably seven.
Broken main.
Broken main, I'm sorry, they broke the main this time, so, yeah, dearly, I'm sorry, okay, dearly, so, so about seven thousand damage plus Kyle's time, so. Steve, I told Steve about it, he's gonna wander over there, get and talk to the new people and request that they notify us if they want to exercise fire hydrants and. Make sure they're properly trained before that.
Will we build it back?
Probably not.
Why not?
Um, it's.
Touchy.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's a touchy subject.
Yeah.
Fireman.
I don't even care who they are, fill them back.
And and part of it is their certification and, you know, otherwise, they're supposed to go and. Exercise these things and do it, so it's, you know. Right.
Prove it. Then, I mean, they they actually, they use a flush hydrant in the main breaks on the same street, yeah. Ninety percent chance, but sometimes when you're flowing a lot of water.
We take the seven thousand dollar hit, they get away with it.
That, why, we go talk to her a couple years in the past, with light waves. So, the other issue we had, which has come up before, and now that Barb and Mark and they're all here. We had an issue with a deck built over a sewer tank. With the building permit, my understanding, Mark, far further than I've read, is that building permit and building over an easement. Does not relieve the homeowner of any. Responsibility if it's, or the village doesn't give any, add responsibility of. Having repair any damages that were occurred to get at the.
The deck is in the way of uh.
Right, and Kyle did the best he could, but there were still some broken boards and otherwise, but.
Tried to put it in village code, it's the owner's responsibility.
And the fact that there was a building permit issued for that has nothing to do with any of it.
And in looking at the plan, there is no easement. And the original deck and pool were built prior to the installation of the sewer system.
Okay.
And they just expanded and repaired the existing deck, so, so it's kind of, and.
Just want to clarify, I just could, and so that's, um. The other thing we had, Eugene. Jeff and Ed and I had a meeting since um. About the water project, Jeff is moving along on that to design it, he's designing it such a way that we can take chunks out of that. Uh, he's working on getting the IPA loans or grants or otherwise, which we're just working through the process. Uh, there is the possibility, we may be able to do. A small section of that with some funds that we may have that have to get spent on infrastructure. And if we did, we're certain that probably Hillcrest by Locust is the worst of the worst right now, so that would be. Part of this project, but just, you know, uh, the money we have for that, there's also some talk of, well, two things came up, uh. One was, for years, we've wanted to run. Start running water mains down the areas of the village that don't have water mains. Um, Rainbow has always been the first one, it works in better with the looping, possibly some of the developments going in. Um, it's also an area that the county has identified as an area that's most likely to start having private wells. Um, start to dry up. So he is adding that to the design, there's no requirement to do that, there's some discussion then about. We probably would just foot the bill for that and then. Have residents hook on in the future that we would not bond it out or finance it, because it was, it's just too complicated, had to get voted on. So that will, it's included in the plan, but we don't, we'll make a decision on that later when we see how much money we get, how much it would cost. The one thing that came up, and I think uh, was that. The ordinances, and Steve and I have talked in the past, that. When they bought the water system. They grandfathered the people that were on water, on wells, on the water system. And I believe the the village code does not allow them to. Put a new pump in, expand it, they can't do any improvements to it, basically, the idea was that when those, when that pump failed. Or they need improvements or to dig it deeper, that they would hook onto the water system. That happened sometime in the early eighties. So the assumption is we have twenty-some hydrant account, twenty-seven hydrant accounts, that's how about right?
I know.
So there was some talk that maybe it'd be to best interest is that we. Grandfather, or sunset that clause, and at some point in the future, it'll be five years or six years, or pick some number. Obligate those people to budget a plan to hook onto the village water system, so. Because I think that was the intent of the original, was that when your well failed, that you would hook on, and. I don't know, do do wells last, pumps in a well last for thirty years, forty years? We don't know, so that, that was the talk, so that was just kind of discussion, but just kind of giving you where we're going with that, I think. I think that was it. Any other, if we have anything, something we need to run? Or something else that we've been talking about? Sewer, Westland Sewer Agreement. And the Westland Sewer Agreement, how we stand on that, Mark, just to let us know. Did that done? Okay, that's it.
By the end of the year, we hope to have that.
Yeah.
Signed, sealed, and delivered.
But I mean, and I guess it's, you know, not a re-nation item, but in the past with the fire department, we've talked about doing intergovernmental agreement, you know, it costs. Money, and it just ends up in a drawer and forgotten about anyway, so we just have to remember every few years that. Make contact and go there and say hello and say, please let us know before you. Test our what, test our hydrants, and we're more than happy to train you or go off with you, so. That was, I know at least what. I want to say five or six, in the last twenty, thirty years that they've damaged, broken valves or wells, fire hydrants or cross breaks, at least.
Five or six.
At least, or more?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's pretty substantial damage. That's it, any questions?
All right.
I don't think it's long, but.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. DeAvenue.
Um, I'm gonna yield my time to Chief, I'm gonna ask him to talk about the uh. The part-time officer training program he's been looking into, and how it could be an advantage for us uh, as we move forward and continue to look for officers in the village, Chief.
Just so everybody understands the whole process, there's, there are various ways you get police officers, you hire. Young kids, send them to the police academy, full-time police academy, that's one way you get uh candidates. Another way is you're stealing from other villages, which is going on. Quite a bit right now, um, which then you're just taking their experienced people and and paying them. An exorbitant amount of money and bringing them over. Um, our model has always been hiring part-time officers. Who have been trained somewhere else, retired somewhere else, or trained somewhere else, and then we bring them in. And then hopefully at some point, if we have full-time openings, we then transition them into our full-time opening. Uh, that model is failing, quite honestly, we're just not getting the candidates, you you've already talked about that, we're just not getting the candidates anymore. Um, so we've got to look at potentially other options, one of the other options, apparently it has been done here in the past. Was to sponsor people and send them to the part-time police academy. So then we would send a person, they would go to the nine-month police academy, and then when they get out, they would be certified as part-time police officers and would work for the village. Um, so that's actually what I'm looking to do for us going forward, um, as an option. Only because it it would give us the opportunity to train some people the way that we want them to be trained here. Um, and then hopefully retain those people and be able to roll them into full-time positions later. I've got at least two people that I know, within eighteen months to two years, who are going to be retiring, we know that. Um, I know for a fact that I only have one officer who's even interested in my part-time staff. To be full-time. Though those numbers don't match up, so I've got to start planning for long, longer-term sustainability as far as our patrol staff is concerned. So that's really what what I'm looking to do, the cost of the program, it costs seventeen hundred dollars tuition to send somebody, and then we have to. The nine-month program, then we have to pay their. Salary while, quote-unquote salary while they're in training as well. Um, my budget can absorb the seventeen hundred for one or two, uh, that. Uh that's not a problem, and I would be able to sharpen my pencil and make sure that the part-time budget per salary measured up as well going forward. Um the issue I've got is timing, they run one of those classes a year, that's it. Class starts in September, or in March. I've got to have a decision on who I would like to send, if I am going to send anybody by sometime in December. So my window is very tight. Eventually, where I see this going, I eventually see us having the opportunity to have a. Um maybe a police commission, have a process that we would go through for hiring part-time officers as well. Uh that would be something that we'd have, we'd be able to spend some time talking about. Right now, I don't have time, obviously, to do that because of the window that I'm trying to operate under. Um if I was to miss this class, this March class, the next one probably won't start until. I'm guessing late fall, if not spring of the following year. Which then means I would go right past the two officers I know that are gonna retire, but we missed that one though. So what I'm looking to do is see if if the village will be um would be willing to approve me getting two people, if I can find two people, to get them into this ac- this academy class. Um and then use that moving forward.
Is there an obligation that? We send them, what is their obligation now?
Well, that's something I would, I would talk to uh Attorney Schuster about, because our current employment agreement, we have people sign, they've signed a a current agreement. What I would recommend is that we maybe tweak our employment agreement a little bit to say that it starts at the end of training. Rather than, because we've got a nine-month period that they're gonna be in training. So I think our employment agreement shouldn't start until after their training is concluded, and then kick in after that. That would give us at close to three years then of a commitment, um if we was to hire somebody.
That's our commitment, two years?
Right now, we're, yeah, we're two years.
Two years.
For the favor, do we need a motion on this thing? I'd like to make a motion that we allow Chief Barbara to move forward with um. Identifying two candidates to send to the part-time police academy. Um and that expense will be covered by the City Hall Police Department budget.
Second, I. Moved by Diavley, seconded by Arnie to authorize Chief Barbara to locate. Two individuals to participate in the part-time officer training program. With a nine-month training session to be followed with a two-year contractual agreement with the village for service. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
Where is that part-time academy located?
It it's right in college.
Okay, so it it's convenient for somebody to get to.
Yeah, and the other thing too that I I explained to Trustee Diavley is. While they're in their, in the academy, we would also have them working with our FPOs here as well. So that I've got them kind of training simultaneously in the way that we individually do things. So my hope would be when they complete their training, they would need a couple of weeks at the most here, and then they'd be just ready to go. But we wouldn't have for eight, twelve weeks of training after the academy then.
So when they go to training, we pay their salaries, correct?
Yes.
Pay their salaries, and we pay the seventeen hundred, uh do we pay expenses too?
Just the salary and the expen- and the tuition, we are reimbursed at half. So we'll get half of the tuition back, we'll get half of the salary while they're in class back as well, from the training board.
Any other questions, Chief? No. Since this involves money, we're back to low calls. Mr. Perrino.
Hi.
Mr. Nibbick.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
He's extremely reluctant, the negative votes in motion, so passes, thank you, one and all.
Thank you, that's all.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Steve, thank you, Chief. Uh building and environment, Mr. Thor.
No report.
Uh building and zoning, Mr. Perrino.
Uh just had uh two things, one uh. Director question, Attorney Schuster. Uh there was an email that came through. Uh with the resident referencing what we did as a board of appeals. Uh that you received, or that um was sent to you and, actually, I was copied and uh. Trustee Diavley was copying. I'm just wondering, is that something that we need to review? As another board of appeals, or would that be something that? Uh you would review? Uh I've not, I've not applied to the resident at all, but. Came, I think, beginning of this week.
I'll have to uh check that out and uh uh then we'll. Uh talk to the village president about whether it needs to be an, then I, if you're meant to be.
All right, thank you. Um the other thing, uh and I really appreciate President Pickett mentioning. Uh um Betty Z, I did not know the lady, but. You know, that's an interesting thing, November's a tough, tough month for me, but. Uh with family that passed in the, passed in the past. Uh but we also lost the trustee who used to sit in this particular seat. Dennis Soudal passed away a couple of months ago. So um you know, unfortunately, we're all gonna be there someday, but you know, it's just uh, it's tough when, when you start knowing people. That go and. I know even uh Tricia Peterson went, I didn't know her either, but. Um you know, it's nice that people spend time doing things as a village volunteer. Whether it's service club, board, P and Z, you know, any of the groups, so. Just uh, you know, thinking about everybody who moved home at night and uh there, but for the grace of God, though I. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay. Onto old buildings. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven, ordinance amending the regulations governing registration of motor vehicles and trailers within the village. This is back on the floor, it was postponed. And. The first of uh October. After it had been brought forward sometime earlier this summer. If I recall, the ordinance was brought forward for. Couple of changes. Uh one of them was the late fee, the collection of the late fee and the way we handled it. And while we were doing that, there became discussions as to the various discounts that were being filed. It uh came to the board in the first of October. At that point, the late fee and the procedures to handle non-registrations was addressed. And it was decided that at that point we would scratch military discounts. And then it got placed on hold. It was postponed, the vote was postponed.
And we voted to take out the. The senior discount was taken out.
The senior discount was, no, no, the senior discount was changed along with the late fee. Procedure. The second to when it came back, then the discussion came up about the military discount. At which point. We tabled the conversation.
But we had.
No.
We had two votes.
There was amendment made to the main motion. To eliminate. The military, the military in addition to the change in the senior. And that's where it got postponed.
No, I thought we voted on, it was postponed after that.
Then we voted on the discount, the removal of the discount, that was it. We voted on the removal of the discounts as an amendment to the main motion.
So the ordinance.
Might have been voted on and then, and and re-impression to me to put it into a document.
No, it was, so we, we voted to, to remove the discount.
The discount.
And then we were gonna vote on the ordinance.
Motion.
The main motion, and that's when we postponed it.
That's one of the pages.
Also, the current motion.
Current motion is for. The. Vehicle registration to exclude the military. But amend the late fee process and the discount procedure.
No, the seniors already, we already voted on that.
You think that motion?
I think it did. Do we need to review that before we?
We need to check the minutes and make sure that.
And the days.
Side with your recollection. Uh I think the minutes mainly basically said we postponed the vote.
Yes. But we voted, we voted on the, pretty sure we voted on the amendment. And then we postponed the vote on the main motion.
And the main motion was for. The senior discount?
No.
Not those. Six October, what? October third was when we had the first order, and it has. The six, the, for sixty-five years, the, it was ten percent, then all of the military was struck. Then was recent one, right, that have, there's a part of the packet shows. Uh it's in much more detail, but in terms of section F and, oh, excuse me. Was not what. F and G had been ordered off, okay, F and G both, that was, that's it, Joe. On October third, we voted to remove F and G.
Correctly, and that.
That was the amendment and it passed.
Right.
Then we were back to the main motion of passing the ordinance with F and G removed.
Correct, that's my recollection, and that's actually, yes, I.
Okay.
Can you say that again?
Okay, F and G.
Uh just to clarify, we are, the motion on the floor now. Is for ordinance twenty-two dash eleven with F and G.
Removed.
Removed.
F and the senior. That's the end of senior, J band and military.
Yes, so that is the motion for both.
Sixty-nine.
Well, that's the motion. That's, that worked, that was tabled for further consideration.
Right.
Okay, then when we came back, F and G had been changed. And we postponed it again.
To figure out where we're at.
Figure out where we are, so here we have them.
Cause we were ready to vote on it that night, we were ready, and then Joe, you were not here, I think you were on uh.
Oh, I think I was here, but then.
No, no, there was prior to that, because you had said, let's take out both discounts.
Yeah.
Because of expense and all that.
Right.
And then it finally got tabled and.
Those two, that was an amendment to the main motion, that got passed. And then when we went back to the main motion, Anthony asked that we postpone it for time to consider. Then when we came back last time. It had been modified. To include F and G again. And that's when it got pulled.
Right.
Procedures, now we're back at it again, F and G typically are out of it. And we're back to the main motion. Okay, the main motion does not have an F or a G in it at this point.
Well, the draft that I'm looking at right now, that does have F in it, but it has.
Has F in it, but it's underlying. Not, not to be, that is what you're saying. Well, that was this, that was the idea originally.
Right.
F and G both were to be struck.
But Anthony brought up.
But Anthony asked for time to reconsider, and so we postponed the vote. And so it's fine.
Yeah, so.
That's where it is down.
But he put in motion back on the floor, uh well, it's already on the floor, so it's a call to question.
It's postponed.
It's postponed, so call the question.
So, question is back on the floor. For twenty twenty-two dash eleven. Minus F and G.
Good.
Okay, do we have any comments, questions or discussion?
Why the heck are we eliminating G? The active duty.
It's, it's kind of a mute issue because we've never had anybody, so if it's in there, it doesn't mean anything, right?
Right, so let's leave it in.
Yeah.
Well, and let's go one further, let's, let's go one further and just, not even discount, let's just give them a free sticker for active duty military. Is that your motion? Well, just leave it in.
You gotta have the motion, gotta motion, yeah.
Oh, it's out, it's out.
It technically is.
It's out now.
F and G are both out, there are no discounts. So if you.
So the motion on the.
So the motion on the board is have the ordinance without those two included. They're out F and G.
If you want to put one back in, you'd make a momentum on that.
So. Okay, what do you want to omit? The military discount or both discounts?
Military.
So just leave a military discount?
Active duty military. That's G, that's G. Right.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Do we have a second on those?
Second.
Okay.
And I will, can I amend that motion to make it free? I mean, why not? If we haven't given it out, and there's not that many, I don't, you know. And we, we, you know.
Okay.
That means more, so.
From, if I, if I may speak from a programming standpoint. Um. We were trying to mirror the military with the senior citizen. Um because it's easier for them to do the calculations uh on the system.
Okay.
But, but what I'm hearing is.
Put them both back in and make them the same discount?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Anthony?
Uh but, but what I'm hearing is, right now, even F and G don't exist at all.
I know, that is correct, that, that was the last motion on the floor.
And Mr. Harney.
Has made an amendment to add G that.
And then.
Was that seconded? Yes.
Yes.
So that motion's on. That motion's on that board and be discussed.
Okay, and then, and, and we can start some discussion now?
That's right.
So. So, so we're not gonna give anybody any discount at sixty-five or older?
That hasn't been suggested.
Right, and I would like to suggest that we go back to temper uh. Ten percent discount for, let's, ten percent.
Okay, so you're making amendment also?
Yeah.
You'd like to make a mo- amended motion?
Yes.
That we add senior dis.
Yeah, we add a senior discount at ten percent up to two vehicles.
Ten percent up to two vehicles. On once.
Second.
Moved by Perrino, seconded by Diavley to re-insert a senior citizen discount of ten percent. Or up to two vehicles?
Yes.
And, and to match that to the military? Ten percent?
Yes.
And. So both will be ten percent straight, that's on him. Okay. Any further comments, questions and discussion on the senior citizen discount to defend that? Discussion, okay, following through the maze, the first amendment. To be voted on will be Anthony's amendment to add. The senior citizen discount of ten percent with a limit of two vehicles per family. And any comments, questions, discussion on that? If not, question, is the military discount, oh, this is the remainder discount, one at a time. Hey, I have nightmares about this, we're here to talk about. Okay. On the amendment to the amendment of the name note. I'm gonna do a walk.
Thanks.
Just so we know where we stand. Okay, on, on the amendment to add back in senior citizen discount.
At ten percent.
At ten percent.
Thank you.
Subject to two vehicles, limit, max. My call, please. Mr. Nibbick.
Uh no.
I'm sorry, no. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Perrino.
Hi.
Five affirmative, one negative, the amendment so carries. Okay, on the second amendment. Which was to reinstate the military uh.
Active duty.
Active duty military discount of also ten percent. Is this limited to one or two vehicles? No, no limitation, okay. Any further comments, questions or discussion on? This amendment? That was the motion by Harney and, and, and seconded by Nibbick. Right. Seconded by Harney, seconded by Nibbick. Okay. No further comments, questions or discussion on that? Roll call, please. Mister Dattley.
Aye.
Mister Perino.
Aye.
Mister Hardy.
Aye.
Mister Nibbick.
Aye.
Mister Hoffman.
Aye.
Mister Thor.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes. Okay, we are now back to a main motion which now includes F and G. Okay, is there any more discussion? On the main motion, which now includes section F. Which is a senior discount to those over sixty-five years of age of ten percent for a maximum of two vehicles. Okay, also added back in is G, an active duty military discount of ten percent. For each license owned, but with no limit to the number of vehicles, okay. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? I just made the motion in his second. The original? Yeah.
No, that's from the meeting.
Then we go back down to uh October or something. Okay.
The change of the.
Yes.
It's actually a discussion, that is.
That's what started.
Well, there's full discussion here, so resident brought a very important thing and I, it fits close to me, it's because I have a first responder family, we wanna add. First responders to that military discount, because that's.
You know, guys, I'm sorry, we gotta stop somewhere.
I feel, you know, my 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 son puts his life on the line every day as a serviceman, right, and I know other.
I appreciate it, but you know, okay, guys, we're great here, I mean, come on, we gotta stop somewhere.
I but I thought that she brought the point, I I kind of.
Well, the other thing you gotta remember is how much space we have on the field.
So we're not gonna give uh active responders because it's based on the form?
Sure, well, you can make a motion.
You can make a motion, amend it again.
I'll make a motion that we offer the the add to. Or that be where that fit in there, Mark, the.
That'll come up. F and G two.
Well, a ten percent discount to what presently employed first.
First responder, yeah, first responders. Is there, is there a legal definition of first responder?
I don't know.
Police and fire.
Police and fire.
Full time police and fire.
Yeah, but you could be overlapping into veterans and stuff like that, you're you're opening up a whole.
Why don't we add the veterans to it, George, let's just.
I I but, you know, I'm sorry, that was a very good point you brought up, I I kind of agree with that, so.
I agree with a lot of it, but like I said, we gotta stop somewhere, we like George said, we can keep on going to. Veterans are some of the people, veterans and all this, I mean, it it comes to a point.
It wasn't hurting anybody.
Okay, okay. Joe, you had amended out there? To add, you know, first responders, did I have a second? Sorry, guys, for the lack of a second.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, on the main motion. Roll call, please. Mister Thor.
Aye.
Mister Hardy.
All right.
Mister Hoffman.
Aye.
Mister Datt.
Aye.
Mister Nibbick.
Aye.
Mister Perino.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, and we have ordinance thirty forty-two dash eleven, thank you, one and all. Okay. Uh takes us on to the next item of old business. Propose to indemnification agreement for the improvements of two oh eight crane court.
Mr. President, uh this is the location where there had been some discussion of adding a parking space at the street level. For a house that is uh uh down the hill, so to speak. Um the final plans Miss Detmer received, uh she tells me were uh. Did not include a parking space, but only a uh some landscaping and enhanced or a new uh mailbox. Uh nonetheless, that improvement is in the public right of way, uh our history has been to require a. Simple indemnification agreement for the village, should uh some damage occur because of that um. Private uh improvement in the public right of way, uh and that's what this is intended to do. And chief, there there's, there should not be a vehicle parked up there.
Correct.
Okay. So we we, it's in agreement, uh the village of the party to it, you need to be informed in pickup order. Please.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the indemnification and the whole harmless agreement for two oh eight crane.
So moved.
That's Perino.
Moved by Thor, seconded by Perino. Any comments, questions, or discussion on this?
Parking or no parking?
No parking.
No parking.
I thought that's.
That's what they wanted, but they're not yet.
Well, they didn't ask, they didn't plan that or get a permit for that, am I saying that correctly, Sheldon?
Yeah, they started construction without any authorization and they have a staff order. Plans that they have submitted are basically identical to what they previously did, but they gave some steel additional. And I don't know if you folks got a copy of his report, but he's in agreement with it as long as they get. Uh their proper permits, um. They have decided that they will not park there, that's part of the agreement, they recognize that they will not be parking. The one thing that she would like to do is be able to add some flowers up there instead of just mulch, so they have like a. Uh a ground cover type of thing, which was not included in the current whole harmless agreement. I just found this out very recently, so um that was not changed in the whole harmless. Uh but she is in agreement with the whole harmless agreement.
So no parking, no.
No parking.
Doesn't say this in here?
In fact, that we added that to this particular agreement, just as a reminder that parking is not allowed in public right of way in the village of City Hall. So. So initially, they wanted parking, but now that has been changed and they're agreeing to move it, that's the understanding everybody has.
Correct, but it's the same exact plan, just so everybody's aware of it, that's why it's called all parking.
Yeah.
Line was added in very appropriately, so that we can.
I had number four.
Right.
At no time shall any motor vehicle be parked, stopped, or less than the location of.
And that's unfortunate. Yes, well, because it's it's a it's a iteration of the village of college. It's it's just an alert, a special alert in the agreement that uh yeah. Don't be hoodwinking us and saying you're gonna just do this and then start parking a car then.
As long as we're not superseding the ordinance, which we're not.
Yeah, correct, right, okay.
And and just for additional information, when they first came in with this plan and said they were going to park. The plan had been to put mulch up there and they were told that is unacceptable, it has to be hard surface. Pavers, concrete, asphalt, and so then they started it. And it's the same dimensions, in fact, it's actually a little bit bigger than what was originally planned, it's eleven feet instead of ten feet. Um to back the paper of the wall, um. But they decided that they would forego the parking.
But this doesn't have anything to do with, in the event somebody, they have a party there where. Anybody in the village has a party, then park your car two two wheels off the. You know, two wheels on the lawn and two wheels on the road.
Right, this one's a little different.
Right, because of.
Because this was not designed.
Right.
They put that up there to change the topography.
Of the road, of the street.
Street in their yard. And allow them to park on that is uh. What's what their intent was, but things started going the different way and this is the way it's gonna be. Okay, we have a motion to approve the uh whole harmless for two oh eight crane? If we do that? All right, thank you, okay. Uh no further comments, questions, discussion, since this is a legal binding agreement, I'm gonna go for a roll call. What the record reflected, sort of collected the president with stone silence, oh man. Uh Mister Hardy, Mister Dattley, Mister Perino.
Aye.
Mister Thor.
Aye.
Mister Hoffman.
Aye.
Mister Nibbick.
Aye.
Six affirmative, no negative, motion passes. Thank you, clerk. Appreciate your help, students. Okay, six zero. All right, uh that takes care of uh old business, any other old business to come before the board? Okay. Uh you said that out loud.
I did.
Uh there any new business to come before the board?
Move to journey.
Move and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Say it into a roll call. Yeah, but who made the motion, I couldn't hear it. Uh was Nibbick and uh Perino.
Yeah, Nibbick getting party.
You had? Okay. Came from the last night.
That does to me all the time.